The mic's the same, but hopefully better. Um.
How are you?
At the, uh, what is it?
Yes.
I, I saw the pictures. I was like, oh my goodness. Not like that in a while.
It was, it was fun.
Or nothing but like the mommy vice style.
Good evening and welcome to the Milbury City. Welcome to the Milbury City Council for Tuesday, February, March 28th. And city clerk, could you please do roll call?
Councilmember Pappan will join us shortly. Councilmember Cahalan?
Present.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Present.
Four members of city council are present.
Thank you. And if everyone could please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. To the flag, states of America, the republic. Okay. Uh, next up is ceremonial and presentations. And the first one will be Cahalan reading the proclamation proclaiming March 8th, 2023 as International Women's Day. Councilwoman.
Whereas International Women's Day is celebrated globally each year on March 8th, where it is a time to reflect upon the accomplishments of women and to celebrate their continual contributions to our society. And whereas the theme for 2023 International Women's Day is embracing equity, women have been fighting for nonpartisan representation in all forms of intersectionality, especially in everyday occurrences in their respective communities. And whereas the city of Milbury honors the historical importance of women who have trailblazed history by the renaming of a street and commissioning an art after the late Harriet Tubman. And whereas many women have been a critical element in shaping our country and community on all levels, continually pushing the boundaries in the communities they live in and serve. And whereas our country has been refined by the contributions of women, however, they still face unique and incessant challenges with inequitable disparities undermining women's potential. And whereas even with and often despite these persistent hurdles, women continue to pilot their communities every day, playing an important role in preserving the livelihood and culture of all people. And whereas International Women's Day illustrates the impact and developments women have made towards furthering opportunities in our society and offering an opportunity to continue to push for the rights of women and girls across the nation and the world. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2023 as International Women's Day. And tonight, we have the women of the city of Milbury staff who are present this evening, accepting this proclamation.
Tonight, next up was going to be the informational presentation on focus equity area and priority equity community from the City County Association of Governments. Their executive director, Sean Charpentier, was going to come tonight, but he is not feeling well. So we're going to move this to our first March meeting. Uh, if we could make sure that the presentation packet that CCG, City County Association of Governments sent, is up on the website for everybody in Milbury who wants to know if your, your neighborhood has been placed into what I think is going to be something that really means we can bring some additional resources to the city. So I'm sorry that we don't have that presentation tonight. And then, um, next up is SB 35 Housing Developments for 1301 Broadway and 130 to 140 El Camino Real. And the city manager will be, or actually, um, our, our, um, brand new community development manager, uh, director is with us, Andrew Morgensen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have, uh, Susanna Avila tonight from M Group. She is our contract planner. Uh, she's going to be, um, presenting this item tonight on these two projects and the background about SB 35 and how that affects our, our permitting process. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to her. Thank you.
Andy, perhaps she, uh, didn't hear you.
Suzanne, if you could bring the, uh, slides up on your end and we'll share the screen. I think you might be on mute, Suzanne. Yeah, you, if you could put this.
Andy, it was, sorry about that.
There we are. Thank you.
Just trying to get this thing to go full screen and it's, uh, stuck here with you seeing my notes here. There we go. Okay. Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, this is an informal presentation for two SB 35 housing developments. One located at 1301 Broadway and the other located at 130 and 140 El Camino Real. So I'll be providing some background on Senate Bill 35, also known as SB 35, and state density bonus law, because both projects are using that, uh, component. And then also I'll give you some, uh, overview and just some brief, uh, summary of the two projects. So SB 35 creates a streamlined ministerial review and approval process for qualifying projects based on, uh, provision of affordable housing units. Uh, so when Milbury, uh, at the, at about the midpoint of the, uh, current housing cycle, which is just ending at the, uh, and we're starting into a new one shortly. At that time, about midway, uh, the production of housing units was a little under par. And so the projects were able to come in under SB 35 with a minimum of 10% affordable units. And at least two thirds of the project has to be a residential part. Um, cause some, sometimes they're mixed use, like these both are, have a, have some retail components. Residential use has to be either permitted by right or with a use permit in the applicable zoning district. Uh, only objective standards can be used. And those are things taken from the general plan, uh, applicable specific plans or the zoning ordinance. The California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, is not applicable to SB 35 projects, although they, we do, uh, invoke a tribal consultation and that has already occurred, uh, earlier in the process for these projects. Uh, projects are not subject to requirements, uh, for a conditional use permit or other discretionary entitlements, because there again, there are ministerial approvals. SB 35 projects require the ministerial review and approval. They have a streamlined process with specified timeframes. And that's based on the number of units in the project itself. The city may not preclude or unnecessarily delay a qualifying project. So we can only use objective zoning subdivision or design review standards when reviewing an SB 35 project. It cannot include personal or subjective judgments. Objective standards may include things like, as I mentioned previously, the general plan, this, uh, specific plan, uh, a housing overlay zone, um, inclusionary housing ordinance, uh, the zoning ordinance, or a density bonus ordinance. Modifications to objective standards may be granted as part of a density bonus concession or incentive or through a waiver of development standards based on state density bonus law. So, uh, each year, the city prepares, uh, what's called an APR, the annual housing progress report that goes to HCD. Uh, and that, uh, this year's will be forthcoming, uh, because it's due April 1st. You'll probably be seeing that in the coming month. With SB 35 projects, those are reported in various phases of the APR, including if it's just a, uh, a titlement being processed, if it's an approved project, if it has a building permit issued, or developments of act, uh, units have actually been constructed. And at that point, once they're constructed, uh, they count towards the arena number. Uh, a covenant or deed restrictions required for the affordable units to ensure that they stay affordable. And, uh, for projects with rental units, that's a minimum of 55 years. Both of these projects are going to be rental, so the 55 year clause applies to the affordable units. If they were owner occupied, it would be a 45 year minimum. So the state density bonus, this allows up to a 50% increase in density. Uh, it's a sliding scale, but it's based on the percentage of affordable units being provided in the project itself. And so there's different categories, uh, in, uh, one case, uh, the Broadway project has chosen to provide 14% low income or very low and 5% low income, which will give you 15, uh, 15 affordable units in the very low income category and five in the low income category. The project on El Camino is, is, uh, providing three affordable, very low income units. So here's the, uh, location of the Broadway project. It's on the northwest corner of Broadway and Ludeman. It's a 0.6 acre parcel. You can see it outlined in red. And so it's a mixed use project, uh, primarily residential in composition. We have 99 total units, 15 very low, as I mentioned, five low, uh, about 3,000 square feet of ground floor retail space. They have two separate spaces they're providing. Um, there's also amenity spaces for residents, including a workout room and second floor courtyard. This building will be six stories in height. It's a, uh, five stories over a podium. Uh, the maximum height is 85 feet at the top of the highest parapet. SB 35, uh, projects do not require parking. But they are providing some parking, uh, in the podium level garage. Uh, that includes 24 parking spaces for cars and two motorcycle spaces. The project at 130 and 140 El Camino is two parcels that are going to be combined into a single lot. And that is about a quarter of an acre site. It's got frontage on both El Camino and Sarah, and it is just north of Linden. Also technically a mixed use project. This is a perspective, the photo here, uh, that rest colored building is the, uh, rendition of the proposed project. Uh, most of the buildings around this are already there. However, that very large one behind is just an entitled project that is not yet constructed. And this particular project has about 1,200 square feet of ground floor retail space. Um, it's 30 units total, three are very low income units, the remainder are market rate units. Um, it also has balconies, a roof deck and a seven, like second level deck for the residents to use. This building's also six stories. Uh, the rooftop is 75 feet from street level and the top of the penthouse element is 85 feet. Uh, again, the SB 35 provision, they don't have to provide parking, but they are providing parking since they do have some retail. So we'll have 18 parking spaces in a garage at the street level. And then, uh, actually it's a basement level garage here. And then we have, uh, 31 bicycle spaces being provided. So just to summarize, uh, Milbury is subject to SB 35. It is a ministerial review and we cannot, uh, require any discretionary, uh, types of applications as part of it. Secret review is not applicable. Uh, building permits are required. And so this will go, if it wants a project's approved, it'll go through a building permit plan check process and it is subject to applicable fees. So that concludes my presentation and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. A question possibly for you for city manager. So these projects don't come to city council at all. So we're doing it this way so that the public knows that these new state housing laws have an impact on Milbury and this is our way of letting the public know what's going, what's happening?
That is correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Council, questions? Uh, go ahead, Ms. Pappan.
Uh, thank you. Can you define for us what the very low units? Can you go back to that 130, 140 El Camino Real? Is that, and for staff, is that, how many of the seven dwarfs is that?
So this particular project has three very low units. Um, it's based on, uh, so the affordability levels are based on, uh, the median income and for the county. And, and so there are, those things fluctuate, of course, but we, we have numbers that we receive from HUD and from HCD. So moderate is 80% or above. Uh, so low would be 30 to 80 range. So when you get into the, uh, I don't know the exact percentage for the very low. It's, it's definitely something that is available to people that, you know, households that don't have the, the means to otherwise.
That's not what I'm trying to get at here. Um, so can, how many units are there? Because we, I mean, we just found out the BART development, the moderate single unit is like $3,600 a month and that's moderate. So I'm trying to see, you know.
Oh, yeah. So I don't have their, what they're going to, would actually charge for rent. Um, so, but they're not moderate. They're under the, they're two levels below moderate. They're very, these, these are very low.
Yeah. Can you go back and tell me, and she said it was only like three very low? Can we go into the details?
There's three, correct. This, this project's fairly small. It's 30 units total.
30 units.
So this particular project is only providing three affordable units. That's the minimum they have to provide.
And who's the developer on this?
That I do don't know, unfortunately. Maybe the director, the community development director knows. I could figure it out, but I don't have it right in front of me.
There's no real developers. It's the property owner that has submitted the application. Councilmember?
Okay. Um, and I mean, this is, it's great from an affordability perspective, but everything we just threw into the station plan as far as design, this is just the same old boxes and windows that we wanted to try to avoid. And yes, as the mayor pointed out, SB 30 gives us no latitude whatsoever here. So it's kind of, it's great as far as affordability goes, but it's kind of tragic as far as the overall, um, design in the area. Going to, um, really, I think we're going to get a lot of comments about that, but we do need affordability. And I am deeply.
Look at this, this one there.
There we go. 30 residents, very low. But then, so what are the other units going to be? We just get three very.
The others, the others can be market rate in this particular case.
Oh.
And, and just for, uh, additional information, the very low is 30% of the county median.
Councilwoman, if I may, the way I read this, there, the, under the law, SB 35, they can get away with doing 27 market rate, so very profitable for three very low income, even though we have the 15% inclusionary. So they're at 10%. We can't even push them to 15%. So for all the housing advocates who push these laws, we're actually getting less, like we did with Anton. Had we not had these laws, we could have gotten more affordability for a better range of affordability if these housing laws did not exist.
Right. And also too, for the legislation that passed, it doesn't require parking, because we've never, ever denied a project for parking, but it did enable us to get more affordable units. So they also took that away from us. This is really, you know, we greatly appreciate the very low income here, but, um, what type of units are these? Are they, do we know? One bedroom, two bedroom, and what are the very low income units?
This particular application hasn't identified the units mix yet. Um, this, we're still working with the applicant on this project, trying to, uh, it's not in a complete form yet. So, uh, they're going to be resubmitting some plans in the near future.
Is there any way for us to ensure that these very low units are, you know, good units? Do they not have to be comparable to these market rate units? I mean, we don't want, we want, he's nodding over there. What? Can you please step up?
No, that's a great question. Yeah. Under state law, any affordable unit has to be equivalent to a market rate unit. So in terms of finishes, um, uh, type of cabinets, tile, it all, it all has to be, um, equivalent.
What about location, Tom? Are these going to be the ones right by the garbage dump, by the garbage cans?
Yeah, I'd look to, and I think location also is an element of that. You can't put all of the affordable units in one corner, you know, and this is by other state law that you have to have a mix.
Let's just make sure. I mean, and, you know, again, we are thrilled to have very low income units here. I wish it would come up to our 15% requirement. It does not. And, um, I'm just very frightened here, given what moderate costs. Um, I'd really like to know what some of these numbers are here. I couldn't afford 3,600 a month for a moderate one. Um, and I think a one bedroom over at the BART station is what, 4,400? And these prices are out of control. We're never going to be able to keep people within our community. Uh, okay. Again, let's emphasize for the public, we don't have much say in this at all. We don't have any say. This happens here. Thank you.
For the councilwoman, I would say we have a lovely new assemblywoman and we do have a senator. So the public, if you are watching tonight and watching the housing units, please know that this is out of our hands, but, uh, please contact our assemblywoman, Diane Pappan, and our Senator Josh Becker.
Let's note that this was not their legislation. There is more legislation trying to come down the pike, um, which our assembly member, I assure you, is very aware of.
Agreed. I, I just a firm believer that there can be fix it legislation. So if nothing else, if we've got a 15% inclusionary for affordability, then let's make sure every project has 15%. Staff, I know you would love to do that. So it's nothing, it's not pointing fingers at anybody. It's just the law allows a developer to basically get away with the minimum. At least they have to build the units with the same quality. Uh, at least that is one good thing. Other comments? Councilman?
Yeah. Let's start with some general question here. We've not discussed the impact fee schedule here. Is there one that you could talk about?
Councilmember, both of these, uh, developments are subject to the development impact fees.
We don't know what the dollar amounts are.
Uh, for multifamily, it will be somewhere between 42,000 to 52,000 a unit.
Okay. And how are the affordable housing unit going to be allocated and managed in terms of allocation process of it? How can we make sure that these BMR units are equitable distributed?
So as part of any affordable housing project, there has to be a deed restriction and then, and then a housing regulatory agreement, um, that sets forth the run with the land. So the units that are affordable are with perpetuity. And so those units run with the land, not with the owner. And so there'll be a deed restriction and, uh, covenants, uh, to assure that those units remain at the level of affordability at, at the 30% of median household income level, which is the very low income percentage, which I believe is right around $49,000 a year for a family of four.
These ownership units, are they for rent?
These are for rent. Yeah, for rent, rental units.
All of them apartments?
Correct.
Okay.
Along those lines, who determines who gets these units? Because we've had some issues with the veterans.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were.
Right. You know, we needed more, so first of all, I think we need a more comprehensive and detailed BMR destination criteria. How to designate what BMR units are within a particular development. Like, you know, on a certain floor, you only have so many of them. Uh, they cannot be vertically linear or horizontally linear. Those criteria need to be equitable, be fair. And also at the same time, as we allocate these BMR units to those who are in need, um, there needs to be a process in place to ensure that distributions of these BMR units are also equitable and fair.
Yeah, again, unfortunately, under SB. Again, unfortunately, under SB 35 legislation, we don't have any authority to, to mandate that. We can ask and we can request and work with the applicant to, to make that request, but we, we can't mandate it. But certainly, we can make that request and, and work with them, obviously. And, and the way the units are managed, it is, it's through housing and community development and through the applicant and our, and our staff. Ensure that a qualifying applicant is vetted and, and their income is verified and, and that we work with the county and, and housing, community development at the state level for that.
Okay. On, on Broadway, 1300 Broadway, or is?
It's 1301.
Okay, 1301. Let me go back to that slide. Thank you. One more? Okay, so I, I think there is a 99 unit development, and the density bonus on that is 46%. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so while maintaining the density, is there any, how is the height limit calculated there? Perhaps legal can help answer that question?
So they are asking for a waiver on the height, and the height for the, this is in a commercial zone. The height, the maximum height would be 40 feet under the zoning. And then they're requesting the, the waiver to that, because they can't provide the units based on the state density bonus law without that additional height. So that would, there's a, is a finding that's required to be made, and that, and ultimately, the, the finding is that applying the existing height limit of 40 feet to the project would physically preclude construction of the project if the density is permitted by state density bonus law.
So I'd like to see us spend a little time up checking that a little bit. I mean, we, while we want to maintain the density at 99, which is governed by the state law, we want to support as many units as we can here, obviously. But in terms of height limit, we, we want to make sure that, that, I think there's a slide that says 85 feet. We want to.
Yeah, that's to the, that's to the parapet tops, yeah.
And the building itself, it's, there you go, 67 and 7 inches.
So that's the flat portion, but then you have these higher parapets for mechanical equipment and elevator chase, those kinds of things. So those are, that, those components are a little higher. Those are what are 85, the top of the parapets.
Including elevator panhouse and such?
Yes.
So I would say we need to tighten that up a little bit, make sure that 77, 67, that's 7, 67 feet, 7 inches is what they absolutely need. Because I understand that you, you mentioned there's some workout rooms and immuno space and what have you in there as well.
Yeah, they've got the workout room down in the, at the podium level in this particular project. So I don't think that's impacting the height. It's in the same level as the, as their garage and their rental office and that, all that mechanical, and they have some, some equipment and storage down there as well. And they've got, they do have a roof deck, but it's, it's, that's not impacting the height.
And then as far as El Camino Real project, did they mention how the parking is going to get accessed?
They are, that particular building's being accessed from Sarah, from the, the rear.
From the rear?
Not from El Camino.
So there's no curb cut on El Camino Real?
Correct.
Okay. And I think Sarah, along with the entire area there, there's a lot of realignment going on. So I think we want to make sure we condition them appropriately, so that the traffic access is in line with our vision in terms of what that area needs to look like in the future. So I can think of at the moment.
The, in the presentation, you talked about that an area where we do have room is where we do have objective standards in place. So from my understanding, is it correct that with our general plan and subplans, the El Camino building, we have some objective standards that we may have room to place against that and make some requests and changes and, and negotiate with that developer? Is that correct?
I don't see that building changing dramatically in terms of the setbacks, height, really the, the shell of the building. That particular building is in a specific plan area. So of course, the criteria from the specific plan will, are, are applicable. So it gets reviewed against all of that in addition to other, other criterias, since there's a specific plan there that impacts it. So that has criteria for, for design and that kind of thing. So they have to meet all that.
And then along those lines, so we have specific design requirements for that area that, that architecture doesn't match. So I don't know what's going on here. If our staff has not emphasized all the work we put in as to what those buildings are supposed to look like, then I have a big problem, and I apologize for interrupting. Could somebody answer that?
Yes, so with the state law, which is, which is new state law, the Home Builders Association is crafty enough to understand that for 80 years, specific plans and general plans had general design criteria and specific design criteria. They relied on the professional architects, licensed architects, professional certified planners to help and assist the process along the way. Eighty years in the state of California to allow the professionals to work on the other side of the table, because one size doesn't fit all. That has now been taken away from the professionals that have an education and a career on design. So unless there's a specific objective standard, such as you shall recess your windows six inches and use wood frame, there isn't, based on state law. We cannot use any subjective criteria. So the very objective criteria in the specific plan, we will apply. Any subjective design guidelines that have been used, like I said, you know, where an architect and applicant pick, oh, okay, I understand what the city's looking for here in terms of design and compatibility. That's been excluded. It's, it's taken the, that ability away from, it's, it's taking the local authority away.
Was there a discussion with our staff? Did you point out the plans that we went strategically through here? Was any suggestion made whatsoever? I mean, we have, I understand what you're saying here, but we need to be clear. We set these guidelines, I guess is all we can call them. And if our staff isn't even, you know, saying, you know, hey, take a look at this.
Yeah, councilmember, not to interrupt, this, this, this is a problem that every city's facing. This is not a city of Millbrae's staff responsibility. This, this is what state law has given to us. So as much as we would like.
I'm just asking, did our staff say, hey, here it is?
Of course. We've also asked the two applicants to be here this evening, and they've chosen not to be here to listen to the discussion. So that shows you where, how much state law has taken away your local control. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to have this on the agenda tonight, not to lead to frustration, but to open up everybody's eyes on how much local control has been taken away from cities and city councils up and down the state of California. And so, you know, we, we wouldn't, I mean, I'm not happy with that blank wall. As a matter of fact, that elevation makes that building look beautiful. There are not recessed windows, there are not different varying materials. See the black lines in the, in the, in the brown and the orange facade? That's just going to be plaster. So all the architectural character that has gone into buildings over the years, that, that has been eliminated. Like I said, and, and again, I think, I think the state and the legislation were very crafty, knowing that for 80 years, general plans were general, guidelines were guidelines. And they knew, the people that were crafting this legislation, knew that that was the case, and, and crafted legislation to say, if you're not specific, again, for the last 80 years, you didn't need to be specific and you didn't want to be specific, they've taken that away. And so unfortunately, there was no element of the law that says, okay, municipalities, you have six months, you have 12 months to update your general plan, to update your design guidelines, to have objective criteria to fit within the law. So it, it is frustrating, and again, we're not the only city. I mean, there are cities up and down the state of California that are, that are facing this. And, and I will say that it's, it's bad legislation, in my opinion. We do want the housing development, but we have 2,200 units in our arena numbers between 2023 and 2030. We have a housing element that's being reviewed at HCD right now that provides for 3,500 housing units. We can accommodate, we can meet the goal for housing, and, and as you all identified this evening, we have 15% affordability criteria. Because of state law, we've lost 10% affordability, because we cannot apply our 15% affordability, because state law is, is dictating here. And that's unfortunate.
So let me jump in here. Staff, we have a lobbyist on, on board now, and part of that is to help stand up for a bunch of things for Millbrae. But could you be keeping notes of the things that Councilwoman Pappan or Fung, any of us, point out? And let's make sure that when we talk to our lobbyist, that we say, this is what we need. You know, just what you spoke of, city manager, had they given us a year to come up with standards that would fit in with the neighborhood and would allow for a neighborhood cohesion, then we'd be fine. We want the 99 units, we want the 30 units on that, but we really wanted at least 15% low income in, in our inclusionary ordinance. So let's start making a list, and let's make sure the lobbyist is working that with, up in Sacramento.
We are taking notes for sure. And the one other thing I'll, I'll add, we know airport noise, right? Especially in this area of this, of the specific plan. Because these developments are exempt from CEQA, we can't even require dual pane windows to mitigate noise.
For the public, I'm going to tell you, for the new project, the Veterans Preferred Project called Rollins Apartment, originally, the developer didn't want to put in the latest technology for airport noise. Ultimately, they chose to, which is really good, because the noise abatement in materials is a, a very dynamic field. It's changing. So for us, in our very specific climate, this is significant. Thank you for bringing that up. We kind of dropped off Councilwoman Cahalan. You're, you're all good? Councilman Fung?
Just a couple of follow-up there. I believe even though they are trying to get an entitlement through SB 35, they are still subject to Title 24, if I'm not mistaken, which will mandate certain energy and noise attenuations criteria.
That is correct, and they'll be subject to the REACH codes as well.
They'll be subject to REACH code and a certain part of CEQA, right? Certain subjective part of it as well, which Title 24 certainly is.
Title 24 separate from CEQA.
They're not, they're not subject to CEQA. Title 24, yes, all building, building code, but not, not CEQA.
Okay. Anyway, so.
I did. I did want to point out, the project on Broadway is meeting your inclusionary housing ordinance. It does have 15% affordable units. So that one isn't, isn't, that one is meeting the inclusionary ordinance.
Thank you.
But El Camino is not.
El Camino is not, right? It's 30 unit with three affordable, is it not?
10, 10%.
It's three out of 30, it's 10%.
Okay. And then another thing is, you know, in terms of objective standard, the El Camino Real lot is 10,000 square feet, give or take?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
And the commercial there is 1,100?
Roughly more.
Yeah, it's just over 10,000.
Yep, 1172.
Yeah, it's about 1,200 square feet.
Do we have a certain objective criteria in terms of how much of that commercial in relation to the lot size and overall building grows square footage? I mean, it's, I'm only bringing it up, bringing this up because this is a major part of our commercial area, where commercial opportunity and retail, where retail opportunity is vital to our tax basis.
I'm sorry, you're asking the question to the applicant or about the, the commercial space?
I'm asking.
Or to the, I'm sorry, to our consultant.
Well, the applicant is not here, obviously.
I'm sorry, I meant to say consultant, my apologies.
That's okay. So the ground floor retail, in relation to the lot size and the gross square footage of the entire building, is it in compliance of MSASP or no?
It will need to be, because we will hold it accountable to that standard.
Okay, all right.
To, to answer your question, I, I do not believe it is, because in the TOD zone, in the specific plan, the entire ground floor needs to be commercial. So there's still some things, as, as Andy had mentioned, our consultant mentioned, still some work to do on this particular project. And I think what the council is saying, Councilmember Pappan, the mayor, Councilwoman Cahalan, we, we do have notes, and we will go back. And, and trust me, we will. I don't want anybody to think that Millbrae is not business friendly, is not residential. We are, without reservation. And, and I think that affordable housing is something that we really strive for, and obviously, with the policy direction of the city council, we want more of it. We also want quality. We also want to be proud of the projects and the public-private partnerships that, that help healthy California move forward, cannot be taken lightly. And, and hopefully, these applicants will have the same objective that we all do for a quality built-out environment, not just in Millbrae, but, but across California. Because it would sadden me dearly, and I think, I think, you know, the council, just, if these projects come in and there's no regulation, and they turn into, you know, very cheap quality construction, that, you know, five years, 10 years, seven years, there's construction defects, and there's these types of things. And, and so hopefully, this law doesn't have those unintended consequences. But I can assure the council, we will do everything that we can to ensure quality and, and to assure quality in the affordable housing units as much as the market rate units.
Yeah, so just for the benefit of the public, so what we've been seeing tonight as presented, it's not the final design, it's just what they come in with. So that, I just want to make sure the public also understands that this is a work in progress, this is not a done deal, and then we are going to make sure we hold these development, these developers accountable, to make sure that they are here to order objective standards that we do already have established.
Thank you, councilman. Couple of questions. Since you brought up other projects, looking at the balconies on these apartments, remember many years ago, there was an apartment, a balcony failure in Berkeley? And that same pro, developer built a project here in Millbrae. They have gone back and retrofitted that project. But can we make doubly sure that how they're building these balconies? Because they look, in a way, kind of similar to those balconies. In fact, they look a little bit more sitting out into the weather than the Berkeley building, that we're being really careful with that. If we could go to the slide of Ludeman Lane on the, the Broadway project, I just want the public to understand, again, I, I'm happy to have this project coming in. The next one that shows the corner view, there was a slide there. This corner is where children walk from the east side of Millbrae up to Green Hill School. And under SB 35, we cannot ask the developer to put out bulbouts. In other projects, we would be able to ask for street improvements for safety, and we cannot do that under SB 35. And I know that this has a lot of affordable units and that cost on there. But I hope that the developer will work with the city. We have had children hit in this area, and if you drive this corner, Magnolia and Ludeman, you're going to see that even before COVID and more cars parked on the streets, the street was pretty much blocked by cars, and little ones are below car height. So my biggest, I welcome this project, but I am very afraid for our children, and we've had history here. So I hope the developer will really work with us to come up with the corners in this very busy area, and everybody's looking at Millbrae Pancake, Pancake House, and they're looking at the park on the corner, or they're going to school, or they're coming home from school, that we make sure that everyone is safe on that corner. And if we can do it with the best line-of-sight work that we can do, I hope that they will work with us on that, even though we can't require them to do that. And Tom, on our list, who, the, our representatives in Sacramento, they need to look at these design guidelines or these laws and make sure that our number one responsibility as your elected officials is public safety on that. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
One other thing, I, I just want to go back to the objective design guidelines. And, you know, we talked about with El Camino, we have some of those in place, but with this Broadway project, we don't. And I think that brings us to the, from what I understand, a real need for residential objective design guidelines. So something for us to look at as the city. And then just for the public, and maybe even for some of us, do we have an update on where And then just for the public, and maybe even for some of us, do we have an update on where we stand with our housing element and affordable units? And, you know, how close we are to getting out of being subject to SB 35?
So we're going to be.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Avila.
You could probably ask this better than me.
I can't see your, I can see you, but I didn't see your hand raised. My apologies. Ms. Avila, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I believe that the city's in substantial compliance now with arena numbers for the current housing cycle, which means that the affordability percentages are going to have to be higher for future projects. Of course, we're getting ready to just go right into another cycle, but as was already pointed out, there's a plan in place for 3,000-plus units. And so I think as those start to come online, and hopefully, that trend will continue, and the city will stay in good standing. And when you're meeting your housing numbers, you're meeting arena numbers, the percentage of affordable units has to be greater. So that is a real advantage to have a compliant housing element and to have, be producing those housing units and be producing in all the different income levels.
Thank you.
Just to add to that specifically, and Andy, you can correct me on my numbers here. And as our consultant said, we're in substantial compliance, but we do not meet our very low unit count. But I think that is where, you know, the very low income is, and we're going to be bringing a report, I think, to the council on March 14th on exactly where we are in terms of our production. Our production of housing is more than what our arena numbers are, it's the income categories that, on the very low side, that we're a little bit deficient on.
We're planning on having the affordable housing, or the annual housing report, come to council at the second meeting in March, and then the housing element itself will come to in April.
And I will say, because I know the public and people are, the very low income is not feasible without some significant subsidy. And when Core Development built the 88 affordable low-income housing units over at TOD2, they informed me that SIDLAC funding, which is state-level funding for low-income housing developers, that the funding that's available at the state, SIDLAC will continue to approve projects until that funding is exhausted. There were 120 rounded numbers, 120 applicants, and I believe 11 projects in the state of California were funded. And so that's where, you know, the economics of the affordability, you hear me say, you talk about old redevelopment law and tax increment to assist, and since 2012, that's been eliminated. But that's why on the very low, it's, you know, we as a municipality can only provide the opportunity, it's the private sector and the affordable housing developers, the nonprofit developers, that have to build it, right? And it's, they're just, the amount of funding isn't available to meet all of the demand for the very low-income housing that's out there right now.
Is that the same fund that's used for housing preservation, for low-income housing preservation?
There is a component of this, but the one I'm speaking of is for new construction.
Yes, I just want to clarify one more thing. As we were discussing sidewalks and all that, as they build this new 99-unit, six-story building, they're bringing in 99 brand-new units, a couple hundred people at least, and then they're going to rip up the sidewalk, putting new utilities, and, you know, they're going to be seeking out a major encroachment permit to doing so. And that entails redoing sidewalks and all of that. And with all of this, I mean, we can condition these encroachment permits with certain sidewalk improvements, including bow boughs and some of the other things that would help improve pedestrian safety. Is that, is that not correct?
That is correct. We can also impose any conditions that are identified in the city's active transportation plan. So we have a bicycle and pedestrian plan in place. If there are requirements of that plan, that is another objective standard that can be applied to this project, and we will indeed be applying it.
Thank you, Councilman, because when I asked about that, they said no, they didn't. So that's a great catch. Thank you. Madam Mayor? Okay, Councilwoman Papen, we have a light agenda tonight, but this is critical, and we really did want the people of Millbrae to understand what we have control of and what we don't. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
We absolutely, I can't underestimate the, we need these low, very low units because the prices are just out of control within this region. I kind of find it hard to believe here, the affordability here, when the market rates are so, so high. I want to emphasize to our city and staff here, the only way we can really show the impact of, you know, throwing CEQA out the door here is, this is, we already know, going to be a parking nightmare because we have the Millbrae House of Pancakes there. So are we talking about limiting parking times in that area just so the businesses can be sustainable? I mean, that is one of our classic businesses. And, you know, I think we need to really discuss limited parking timeframes in that area. Because, and I would really like to know, too, let's track the impacts. If the state legislature wants to throw out CEQA at every single turn here, there are impacts. And we have never been anti-development. But these impact the quality of life for everyone here. So we need to start collecting data and showing what the results are here. And also, too, exactly when these units come online, what is very low and low? Because I think it's going to be starkly expensive. It's not going to help the people we really, really need to help. So, and just down the block, if you could bring up the street again?
For this particular one?
Yeah. So if you look across from the Pancake House there on Ludeman, that was our redevelopment. We put up that affordable building back in the day. So we know how to do affordability, they took it away from us, and that's kind of tragic because we built right across the street from, on the other side of Ludeman there, is an affordable unit that the city of Millbrae built. So again, here we go. We welcome new units, and to the residents, we don't have a lot of control here, and hopefully, we can work with some of these developers to make some nice suggestions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe we've got one public comment.
Mayor, we do. The speaker is Nathan Chan.
Go ahead, Mr. Chan.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the meeting in person, but I want to thank very much the council and city staff for bringing this presentation forward. Something that I didn't hear mentioned about the El Camino project is that it, I believe the entire project is within the land area that High Speed Rail identified on its EIR as something that they need for their station parking lot. And I know that this is an active area of litigation and negotiation between the city and High Speed Rail. I'm wondering if the city planning presenter has talked with the applicant about this? Does the applicant even know about it? And how will that particular not be resolved? So yeah, thank you so much for your time. Hope to get an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. I actually had that on my list, but I wasn't sure, given the status of litigation, if we could even ask the question. City Manager, go ahead.
I think for the benefit of the public, it is a good point that High Speed Rail's plan and the clearance of their environmental impact reports show the, all the eight acres on the west side of the transit station as surface parking. Now, in terms of that impact with this project, we vetted this through our land use attorney, and they have identified that, you know, that's between this applicant and High Speed Rail. We're in every right to move forward and entitle projects and stay consistent with our plan, so.
Thank you, and thank you, Planning Commissioner Chan.
I'll say one more thing here. And for the public here, too, we've already approved 488 units right there, that big project in the back, housing units, which have been stalled because of High Speed Rail. So we do want to emphasize, we welcome projects and high-quality projects at that. And that's what, how many units of affordability?
15%. 15%.
With no public support, no public funding into it.
Thank you.
So thank you. Staff, thank you. Public, thank you for your patience with this. This is real world. And again, if you've got other comments, please get back to us. I know a number of people contacted me after a recent article came out saying that 171 Bay Area communities are subjected to. I didn't think we were subjected to, but under SB 35, we are one of those 171 that have to let some projects go forward?
Well, there's, I think, 365 municipalities, and over 300 are subject to it.
Okay.
I've read in the newspaper, there's a Tony Little community down in the LA area that somehow is exempt from it in LA County, which I'd like to do a little bit more research because I don't think that's equitable and fair. But there's a lot, this is new policy, this is a great discussion, and may merit some study sessions, too, as we progress. One other thing I'll just say, you know, is, one of the things that is lacking is housing affordability for homeownership. And I think homeownership is something that, you know, we can all have a discussion, you as policymakers, talking to our lobbyists, that is one of the missing things. And I think construction defect litigation issues need to be addressed by our state legislature because I think access to affordable housing for homeownership is missing. And I go back to the Henry Cisneros days under President Clinton, and they had a great formula for homeownership, and something that we should probably, the state of California legislature should take a look at. Anyway, I'll get off my soapbox, but I think this is important.
I think that's a good comment. I know we have another planning commissioner who was very concerned during the MSASP process, that we didn't have enough ownership in that area. And today, I had a developer call me about one of the city lots, and I encouraged, I called them row houses or townhouses, and I think they're looking at condos, but that is on city property, so that will be coming to you soon, if not already. With that, I'm going to close this item down. I don't think any other questions. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Ms. Avila. And next up then is item number two, Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. City Manager, pausing your court.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. Under item number two on the agenda, we have our calendar of events, that's an informational item, reports and bills and claims, that's an informational item. Item number three, Approval of Meeting Minutes. This is approval of meeting minutes of the special meeting of November 15th, 2022. There are no oral reports from any city committee or commission chairs this evening. Then we move to public communication. This is the item on the agenda that any member of the public can address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening, starting with item number five, which is to receive and file the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending January 31st, 2023. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an amendment with the County of San Mateo to provide law enforcement services for the fiscal year 2223 through fiscal year 2627 contract in the amount not to exceed $8,64,820 for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Item number seven is approval of a field use at Central Park and fee waivers for the Spring Festival on April 8th, 2023, and the applicant is the Millbrae Rotary Club. Item number eight is consider approval by motion to authorize the mayor to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC. Mayor, I've received a few requests to remove this item from the consent calendar for further discussion. Then we move to public hearing. There are no public hearings this evening. Under existing business, item number nine is a discussion and direction regarding the downtown parklet program. We put this as an action item, so any direction of the council, it's not just informational, but can be in action. Then moving to new business, item number 10 is an appointment to the Board of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, known as BOSQUA, and the Bay Area Regional Water System Financing Authority. Then we move into council comments. Then we do have a closed session after this regularly scheduled meeting this evening, Mayor. Real quick, if I may, the events happening in the city, first and foremost, we would like to congratulate the Mills High School Women's Varsity Basketball Team. The Mills Varsity Girls Basketball Team claimed the Central Coast Section Division III Championship with a 66-52 victory over number-two seeded Santa Cruz. The tournament was held this last Saturday in Santa Clara, so congratulations to the Lady Vikings on bringing home the championship. This is the first championship of the girls' basketball team at Mills since I was in kindergarten in 1985, 1985. So congratulations to the Mills Women's Varsity Basketball Team on their CCS championship. Also today, we had a Public Works recognition luncheon. We wanted to celebrate the hard work of our Public Works employees, especially over this last few months with the storms that we had in November, December, and throughout the first part of this year. And I'd just like to read off names that we had recognized, because these are the names of, and we recognize a few at a council meeting a few months ago, but these are the folks that on Thanksgiving, we had a crew on a broken water line that was out around 7:00 AM Thanksgiving morning and worked through the night as a water main on Helen Drive broke, it broke again, and had to be repaired. And so, anyway, my hat's off to the whole crew, but Nick Tippens, Kevin Matlock, Brett Powell, Dave Martinez, Noel Gantley, Carlo Medina, John Rios, Harry Kwong, Ryan Tran, Robert Mounier, Darren Zolferelli, Stephen Carabao, Justin Ledbetter, Craig Centus, Mike Kiligrew, John Gianoli, and Jim Harrington. So, you know, this is a crew of folks that have done a bang-up job over the storms and have kept the city, kept the city moving, morning, noon, and night, 24/7. Also, our commission and committee, we have several vacancies, I mentioned at the last meeting, so we're now recruiting to fill vacancies on several commissions and committees. Information can be found on our website. And if you have any questions, you can also contact our city clerk at 650-259-2414, again, 650-259-2414, or go to the city's website for further information. We do have two vacant positions and one alternate position on the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. And then we have two vacancies on our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and we have one Park and Rec Commission vacancy, and we have one Youth Advisory Committee vacancy. So those are the current openings. Also, our Millbrae Recreation Spring Break Camp, our Recreation Department has several camps that will be offered through March 27th through March 31st. Again, our catalog can be found at bit.ly backslash millrec or our website under our Recreation Department. You can view our recreation camps, we have the National Academy of Athletics All Sports Camp, Championship Tennis, Digital Monkey Camp, and Communications Academy Camp. And then also, our Millbrae Public Works, our See, Click, Fix, which we've titled Millbrae Works, is up and running. We've had so far nine requests from citizens for repair work, and the feedback has been excellent so far. So we just want to continue to get the word out. Our See, Click, Fix, if you see something from a pothole to trash, to graffiti, to a sign that needs to be repaired, please use our new See, Click, Fix, and it'll submit a work order to our Public Works Department, whoever it's assigned to. We also have an unhoused component of it that we're working with, obviously, our Life Moves folks. And so it's been an effective tool, and we just want to continue to get the word out. And then our Millbrae newsletter, we send out a biweekly newsletter on our e-notification, so anybody that would like to sign up, please, again, access through our website and sign up through our e-notification system for our Millbrae newsletter. Then in terms of events, tomorrow, there is a groundbreaking, I believe this is on the council's calendar, 3:00 PM, it's the Longfellow Development Biotech Campus Project Groundbreaking. And then Millbrae Recreation Summer Camp Fair, March 3rd, starting at 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. This is for any, anybody that's interested in our Millbrae Recreation Summer Camp, or to be a counselor, or to work part-time during the summer at our summer camps. be a counselor or to work part-time during the summer at our summer camps. And that again is 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Millbrae Recreation Center on March 3. And then we have, lastly, the Millbrae Fix-It Clinic. This is March 11, 2023, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And as I understand, it's at the Millbrae Library. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, anything that you need repaired, bring it in. And as I understand it, they will help you fix it. So the Fix-It Clinic, March 11 at the library from 11 to 2. Guys don't want to see my garage, I need a flatbed truck. And then lastly, we have the unveiling of the Freedoms Threshold, which commemorates the life of Harriet Tubman. That is March 16 at 12:30 PM at the Millbrae Gateway Station. This is in the Plaza area, just on the east side of the Bar Station. So March 16, 12:30 PM, the unveiling of the Freedom Threshold Art Project, which commemorates the life of Harriet Tubman. Mayor, that concludes my update.
Excellent. Thank you, City Manager. I'm going to add one thing to that. I'd like to give a huge shout out to the city manager and to staff and to John Gianoli and Paul, who helped Eagle Scout candidate Jisoo Chang plant two Satsuma plum trees up by the community garden. This is part of his Eagle project. We started this before COVID hit. It took some bells and hoops, but the trees were planted. They're flowering. They're going to have fruit. And in a couple of months, we'll get to celebrate a couple of Eagles, a couple of Boy Scouts in Troop 355, who will be achieving their Eagle Scout Award. So look for that in the coming months. But congratulations and city, thank you. This is another example of the city working with the community and especially showing young people that you can make a change. So I'm very grateful for that. All right, next up is approval of minutes. This is the special meeting minutes of November 15 to 2022. It's an action item. And for our new council members, it is permissible if you want to vote. You don't have to. But if you've read the minutes and they look okay, you can vote. If I could have a motion in a second.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Motion by Councilwoman Fung, second by Vice Mayor Goodman. No comments? Please call the vote.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The meeting minutes passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next up is the section for oral reports from city committee and commission chairs. We have no reports tonight. So now moving on to public communication or public comment. This is for anyone wishing to speak on a subject that is not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes. If you could please state your name and your street, it gives us an idea of where you're coming from if you're talking about an issue in your neighborhood. And City Clerk, I have one in person, so we'll call that. And if there's anyone on Zoom or by phone, if you could please make sure the city clerk sees that you are there. Ron Raquel, please join us at the podium.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Ron Raquel. I live at 193 Willow in Millbrae. My concern is the intersection of Millbrae Avenue and Magnolia. I've brought this up on numerous occasions. I've been hit almost 20 times over, close to being tattooed and run over by cars, and I've had the right of way. I'm sure I'm not the only one that has experienced this. This is an intersection without a controlled turn light in both directions, north-south. There is a lot of traffic, just not for pedestrians, but for people trying to turn east or west going up Millbrae Avenue or down Millbrae Avenue, and especially during the commute hours. I don't know what's going, what it's going to take for the city to act on this. I mean, are we going to wait for a fatality? I'd rather us be proactive than reactive and have a major lawsuit. I've reached out to the prior city council on an email, and it's been crickets. And I'm kind of at my wit's end, and I just hope that you guys consider addressing that intersection because you have a controlled turn light east-west where there is not as much traffic flowing, and you have north-south, and there is just an abundant amount of traffic. There's so many tangibles, the people trying to turn left and right, pedestrians crossing. I've been this close of being hit. I don't know what it's going to take for the city council to address it. As I mentioned, I've sent out a general email to all the council members at the previous administration, and I've gotten nothing, no response. So I just hope, I just want this as public record, that this needs to be addressed before someone unfortunately perishes in a motor vehicle or a pedestrian. And I've seen at least three accidents at that intersection, and I just don't know why the city does not address this. And it is a major concern. And once the project's down on Millbrae Avenue, do you think traffic's going to be lighter going up in that direction? I tend to agree not. You're going to have more possibilities and fatalities or circumstances that are beyond control, but this is a fixable solution. It just needs to be addressed, and that's my two cents. And I just wanted to bring it to your record and for public comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. Council's not allowed to respond back to items not on the agenda, but this did come up at the Millbrae BPAC meeting this week, so I can bring something up at my council comments at the end. I have no other written request for public comment. Anything on, you have anything, City Clerk?
Mayor, I do not have any public comments on Zoom.
Very good. Thank you. Closing public comments, moving on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, if there could be a motion and a second for agenda items number five, which is to receive and file the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending January 30, 2023. This is an informational item. For agenda item number six, resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an amendment with the county of San Mateo to provide law enforcement services for FY 2022 and 2023 through fiscal year 2026 and 2027 in an amount not to exceed $8,064,820 for the period of July 1, 2022 and June 30, 2023. Hopefully, I read that correctly. And agenda item number seven, approval of field use at Central Park and fee waivers for the Spring Festival on April 8, 2023. Action. Motion? Motion from Vice Mayor?
So moved. Sorry.
Second?
Second by Councilwoman Cahalan. Any comments? City Clerk, could you take the vote?
Councilmember Pappin? Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent items five, six, seven is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. So moving on to agenda item eight, pulled from consent calendar. This is approved by motion to authorize the mayor to attend a National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC. This is the end of March, with lobby day being on March 28, Tuesday, March 28, 2023. It's an action. I don't know if staff has a report or if there are council members that have questions or comments. How would you like to go through with it?
Mayor, there's no report. I think just open it up for questions would be appropriate.
Opening for questions? Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I mean, we, I was trying to check on the agenda for the conference, and I just didn't see what specifically...
Councilwoman, could you go a little closer to your mic?
Certainly. Thank you. I just didn't see specifically what the return would be to the city of Millbrae here as we just had a speaker tonight. We have probably $1 for every $10 of need for our community here. We do attend the State Council of Cities, and I just was unclear on what the return would be to the residents for this expenditure and your attending this conference. Because again, I tried to pull it up online. I didn't see anything specifically related to our goals moving forward here and just concerned about how we move forward with our limited budgets.
I think it's an excellent question, and if you'll give me the opportunity. So the difference between this and state legislation is, at least in one of the committees that I'm assigned to, Airport Roundtable, it is not a state issue, it's a federal issue. So SFO noise, it's called the SFO Community Roundtable. Initially, when it was started, it was noise and air pollution. Recently, they've just been dealing with noise, but they really should also be dealing with air emissions. This is the year that the Federal Aviation Administration is reauthorized. And within that reauthorization is a scope of work for the FAA. And it turns out sadly that SFO, it's the fifth busiest airport in the United States of America, and it is unique in that most airports have equal traffic arriving and departing in different directions on their runways. In SFO, runway 21, I'm sorry, runway one, left and right, and runway 28 are used predominantly going from Millbrae out into the bay, but 17% of those flights actually do take over, take off over us. And those flights are ignored under the current FAA structure of looking at how they average out noise events. That, the other thing that the FAA doesn't do, which comes back to California state law, it is the Federal Aviation Administration that creates the noise metrics. It's very technical. So there's a C-weighted noise and an A-weighted noise. We're affected by, in Millbrae, by both types of noise, but the one type, that low grumble that we hear, that many of us hear especially at night, and it isn't just bayside manner. It's all the way up the hill. It can be up in meadows. It can be in Mills Estates on that. That low-frequency noise is entirely ignored by the Federal Aviation Administration. I chair one of the subcommittees under the FAA for the last three years. We were postponed for the city of Palo Alto, who does go to the National League of Cities and advocates for the noise that they experience. But we've never had anyone really advocating for the very specific problems that we meet. And it was recently pointed out that FAA only looks at the typical departures on runway one. They don't look at what's called a reverse flow or bad weather departure. And in fact, bad weather, it doesn't have to be bad weather in our area, it can be bad weather in Oakland, and we'll have more of those flights going over us. So I do also serve on the SFO Legislation Committee. This is an opportunity to actively advocate for Millbrae and for the other close-in communities at certain meetings that are special within the transportation segment of the lobby day of that. So the plan is to go and meet with what's called the Fly Quiet Caucus. Jackie Speer, our former, our retired Congresswoman, was one of the top three people in that caucus. Congressman Mullen is on the caucus, but he's brand-new. So basically, it's carrying the fight for the city of Millbrae uniquely and SFO uniquely. In addition, there are special meetings being set up to look for funding for the sewage treatment plant to move to third tertiary water or drinking potable water for their another unique need. The Congresswoman got us the initial $800,000, but now we're shopping for city manager $30 million, $40 million to go to...
Double that, about $65 million.
It keeps, I don't want to, I'm going to stop asking because the number keeps going up. So I have meetings with that. And then I know that three of us attended the celebration of the electrification of Caltrain. I used my time to get to meet and begin communication with President Biden's legal counsel on transportation issues for the public. You know, he's very pro-train. I went to school in Europe. I love trains. But we do have SFO, we do have high-speed rail stopping development on our entire east side, so I have plans to meet with legal counsel out there and to specifically talk about Millbrae's needs. So there's things within the conference, including the, what's called First Tier Cities Meeting, which are suburbs impacted by larger cities, of which Millbrae very much fits that. We're a small city, hugely impacted by the city and county of San Francisco. So National League of Cities has this First Tier Group. I've been participating for the last year. We'll be meeting on First Tier. We'll be meeting with an Indigenous Peoples Group on issues there. So there's a host of additional meetings that will be held from Saturday through Tuesday night.
I thank you greatly for your advocacy, as always, Madam Mayor, for these important issues. I just, I didn't see those topics on the published agenda there, so I'm just going to have to abstain because I don't have the information there. And again, I greatly appreciate all your advocacy, and I hope that Congressman Mullen will be assisting us where Jackie Speer left off on these very concerning issues. I just, as I said, I looked at the agenda, I didn't see these things mentioned here, so I will just abstain.
I understand. And I would like to give a thank you to Katrina. I'm sorry, Katrina, I don't have your last name in front of me, former staffer of Congresswoman Speer, who is now with Congressman Mullen, and she's helping me make some of these arrangements. But some of them I've been doing on my own to, based on the needs of, based on what's happening around our TOD and our sewage treatment plant and SFO. So...
One quick question. Yeah, and I, for negotiations for additional funding for like sewer treatment and stuff like that, were we not going to get a lobbyist? I mean, we have one for Sacramento now. I thought that was part of the process here.
But she's entirely, the firm is entirely California-based, not Washington.
I know, and I was just asking here because it's going to take more than one meeting, I think. Thank you.
I'm sorry, City Manager, I cut you off if you wanted to add. Any other questions on this? Councilman?
Yep. So I read the staff report here, and given the proposal here is a spending of about $4,000 of our general fund, I would love to see that. And I listened to what you just articulated earlier, and I think that is actually very important work. So I would love to see that we set some tangible expectations on what can get done as part of this trip here. Really like to see some, make some progress on airport noise. I will say that, you know, part of the silver lining in having COVID is that, if you can call it a silver lining, many of us have learned how to use Zoom and brain the intensive productivities over the last three years. I personally met many folks in different time zones internationally and collaborated with many people in the last three years on Zoom meetings. So, but here we are spending, spending $4,000 of taxpayer money. I would only, I think it only makes sense for us to set some tangible expectation on what the taxpayers would get and some positive impacts that we could make and that we can expect to see as part of this travel. And in general, I would agree that much of the work needs to be done regarding airport noise. Glad we have this opportunity. And lobbying is necessary, and that's why we approved the budget sometime last year, hiring a consulting firm just to do exactly that. So I would say we should take advantage of all these opportunities and consultants that we hire to the extent possible, including the FAA and the Quiet Sky Caucuses. So, you know, as part of this work and when completed, I would also think that, you know, it'd be good for the public to be aware what actually gets done as a result of this trip. So just for public knowledge would be a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman, and I completely agree with you. I know that we had hoped last year and fiscal, in calendar year 2022, to begin having at least one meeting with the public to talk about noise because we haven't pushed really hard. But this is the point, to be pushing for that. The, at the last SFO Roundtable two weeks ago, Ivor Sotira, who's the executive director of the airport, admitted that the insulation programs, that's technical for the new windows and attic insulation that was done here in Millbrae in 1990 and in other communities, has failed. So they're now spending, they've gotten a recent grant of $125-plus million for that. However, because the FAA no longer counts the kind of noise that we impact here in Millbrae, only three homes in Millbrae fall within the 65 decibel contour. Those three homes are in the corner of Nandina and Quarto. So any of the homes that included all the way up the hill, almost to where you live, all of those insulation programs, the airport is now admitting that have, are failing. And we are not, we do not qualify for what's called the Second Chance Program or the reparations or the repair of those badly-done insulation programs from the early 1990s. So that's yet another reason why we have to change the measurement because the FAA draws the contours. And the contours tell the airport whom they can and whom they cannot do the insulation programs for. So my parents' home was one of those homes. I will... I will tell you, the windows were so bad that they basically rotted out the framing in the second floor, which I've now replaced, and we're slowly replacing the windows, but we all know windows are horribly expensive. So if more Millbrae people can qualify, I know that we had our former recreation director's home, he couldn't even open his windows anymore and kept a baseball bat to be able to get out of the house. So people in Bayside Manor who are getting the noise, these windows are unsafe.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I wanted to call a question, but there's no motion.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve item eight of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, on the question of tangible expectation?
There's a motion.
Oh.
I heard you loud and clear.
Right. And if there's a second, then we can continue the conversation.
Second?
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. So, Councilman, fine.
Yes, so I, yeah, so I would love, I think the public and I also would love to see some tangible expectation as part of this trip.
Okay, if we are, no further, no further questions, this has been pulled off consent calendar, I believe I need to open it to the public for comment. If there's any public comments, do we have anything on, online?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Well, Mayor, actually, I just received hands raised by Yo-Yo.
Okay, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, actually, I did not have a public comment on this item. I pressed my button by accident.
Thank you, Mr. Schway. No further questions, I have no comments or requests for public comment in writing. Please call the question.
Councilmember Pappan?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
No.
Council, sorry, Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Motion carried by 3-1-1 with Councilmember Gina Pappan abstaining and Councilmember Fung voting no.
Thank you, and thank you, Council. Next agenda item, public hearing. We have no public hearings tonight. Moving on to existing business, this is discussion and direction regarding downtown parklet program. It's an action item, and I do have public comment requests for this.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce again Mr. Andy Moganson, our Community Development Director for a presentation.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Moganson.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Lim, our Assistant Planner, who is going to be taking lead on the parklet program. She's joining us here in the audience this evening. So this is a fun item, I think it's been a very successful program. I think it's been very popular with all the businesses and residents who have enjoyed the use of parklets here in our downtown area. So as you may remember, back in June 2020, the city passed an urgency ordinance and a resolution which enabled restaurants to have parklets and outdoor dining during the COVID-19 state of emergency. The temporary program has been very popular, it's been very successful, especially with local restaurants. In fact, I think just about everyone that's applied has been a restaurant or a tavern. And coincidentally, the COVID-19 state of emergency ends today, today is the last day. But because it's also the last day, that means that that emergency ordinance that enabled our temporary parklet program also ends today. So also, last summer, the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury presented the report on outdoor dining and made recommendations on the development of permanent outdoor dining regulations. So we're also here this evening to follow up on the recommendations of the Civil Grand Jury from that report, where they requested that cities provide direction to their staff on the development of permanent outdoor regulations. And we responded to that and said that we would be bringing the item for the council. So we're also following up on that today. We brought this item to the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee at their Thursday, January 26 meeting. We got some feedback from their members on the parklet program, just as we're getting from, we're hoping to get from you this evening. The EVAC members were supportive of continuing the parklet program, but some of their members had expressed concerns about the impact on parking availability. We also received one comment that was in your packet this evening on that very topic. Local businesses who currently have or previously had a parklet were received, they received a notice in the mail about tonight's agenda item, so we let them know a week ago that we would be talking about this tonight, and we invited them to join us. So at the peak of the program, Millbrae had about 12 parklets and seven outdoor dining permits on public sidewalks. A lot of the dining, a lot of the downtown restaurant owners noted that the parklet program was a lifesaver for them. It really helped them stay open, stay in business during the COVID-19 pandemic. So, but right now, today, we have in the public right-of-way just six parklets still in place, and they occupy 18 parking spaces. So the current, that's the current status of where we're at with the parklet program, just six parklets and 18 parking spaces occupied by those six. Parklets tend to be most successful when used by high-turnover restaurants with limited seating. That's been true here in Millbrae, that's our typical user for parklets. They do bring people outdoors, they provide activity on the street, they give businesses additional seating capacity at the expense of a few parking spaces out front. And you can see, this graphic shows the location of the six restaurants with parklets downtown. A couple of them on El Camino, one on Hillcrest, and three of them are on Broadway. And this is how it is just today. Oops. So you can see, there's just some photos of the parklets that are up right now, these are recent photos. They vary from complexity, some of them have temporary electrical connections, some of them have just very simple design. It seems to be universal, they're all made out, they all use basically wood construction for their materials. Some of them will shelter you from the rain, some just have a little tarp. Most of them have some kind of sun, sun coverage. There's some, there's some universal standards for parklets that we already know, that we already have in place. So by and large, every parklet program has clear criteria for durable and attractive construction and materials. Parklets have to be generally ADA, they have to be ADA-accessible, they can't obstruct stormwater drainage, obviously they can't block the gutter. They have to be located on a level street with generally a low speed limit and away from street corners. Parklets can't obstruct fire hydrants, driveways, stormwater inlets, utilities, manholes, that kind of thing. Parklets are the responsibility of the permit holder, so the business owner is responsible keeping those, for keeping those parklets clean and maintained. And by and large, just about every city that allows parklets in the public right-of-way, they require the applicant to have a certificate of liability showing the city as a, as a named party, because when you issue someone a parklet permit, that's also an encroachment permit because they are encroaching into the public right-of-way. And so the permit program that we want to create will effectively be an encroachment permit. And so we have a few recommendations for next steps. First and foremost, we want to allow the existing parklet permit holders that are out there right now, and we've got six of them with parklets in the public right-of-way, we have a few more with parklets in their parking lots. We'd like them to, we'd like to give those permit holders a grace period, starting today, even though the urgency is over, so that they can continue using those parklets until we can develop a formal parklet program, if that's the direction from Council this evening. And we'd like, we'd like the Council to direct staff to develop a formal parklet program with some criteria for design permitting and maintenance, and we'll bring that back to you for codification and an ordinance at a later date, once we get that completed. We'd like to establish an annual fee for parklets. As I mentioned, it's an encroachment permit in the right-of-way, there should be an appropriate fee for the use of the public parking spaces. And we also would like to run the parklet permit on an annual basis with a January renewal because parklets are most used in the summertime. That's probably the last time a parklet owner wants to come in and apply for a permit is when they're the busiest time of the year and people want to sit outside. So it's good to have a January renewal date in the middle of winter when the parklet may be the least used. So we'd like to have that run with the calendar year. So those are our suggestions. We'd like to hear some Council direction, feedback, and next steps. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, love to hear your thoughts. Obviously, we have some folks here who also have comments as well.
Thank you. Council, do you have a couple of questions, and we'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back. I'm not seeing any questions right now. I know Councilwoman Pappan's style is to hear from the public first. So I'm going to call up Vernon Bruce, is my one in writing public comment, and I'm going to guess we have at least one online. Welcome, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. Don't know why I have to always adjust that downward when I come up to a microphone. But anyway, thank you, well, thank you for having me, Madam Mayor and City Council. When we first heard, I, my business, as most of you probably know, but to us, we might not, is right on El Camino, in the heart of downtown, in the 300 block. And when we were approached, myself and other businesses, with this proposition of having the parklets, we certainly went right along with it, with the contention and the promise that they were going to be removed by the end of COVID. That promise was conveyed to us by Elisa Tienney, then employee of this city, and another gentleman, that I can't get his name, but I don't remember it. In any event, it is now substantially longer than we ever would have dreamed it being, at three years, and we now are being told that they might stay. It's been a substantial problem for my business. We are now pretty much back to pre-COVID levels of parking, which was terrible at best, especially after the opening of a restaurant across the street from my business that affected the entire downtown there. That was never really fully mitigated. But anyway, let me cut to the chase here, I have a minute and a half to go. The permit and lease system that has been talked about will do absolutely no good whatsoever for my business or any of the other businesses that this negatively affects. It might be a revenue stream for the city, but it's not going to keep my customers, or it's not going to allow my customers or potential new customers to come down. My shop business, basically I have two businesses built into one, one is out-service that I have with service vehicles, and the other is the shop itself. Basically, my service vehicles are supporting my shop personnel. I am effectively working for my employees. But in any event, with the way the parking is right now, and for that matter, even without the parklets probably, any increase in bringing customers to the downtown, whether it be the city helping to do that, or whether it be the individual businesses doing that, any new customers downtown are going to be displaced by those customers that are not going to be able to park. Some of those will probably even be those potential customers. I just don't see how this is feasible, that we can keep any of the parklets there still. It's simply unfair to the neighbors. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Punzak Proh?
Hi. My name is Paul, thank you. One of the things, I put the patio out after we have a COVID-19, I thought it would be a little nice, and I put it up maybe, I spent about $12,000, put a patio out, it looked real nice. And within a month, I took it out. One of the reasons, because our food is not like just a sandwich, go out and sit down and eat, so we're going to require a lot of zapping food in our, and also, if you don't keep an eye on the press, the homeless is going to come in. So within a month, the homeless take my table, put it down, and they sleep in there. So to me, this is not what I want in this city here. I've been here about 30 years, and believe me, me and my neighbor, the ski shop, we're chasing the homeless every single week, and it's getting worse, okay? The patio and everybody make money, that's fine, I want them to do good, but the thing is, a lot of press, as the gentleman said, have a sixth press in Millbrae, but most of them, it looked really, really bad. Beginning fine, looked nice, everything, everything after that is looked really filthy. And if you don't wash out for the city here, the homeless is going to walk into the city very fast. I lose three of my businesses in San Francisco, all the homeless. That's why I closed all the business, I come here, and every single day I work there, how to find people, how to keep up with the business. The business right now, it go down more than 50%. I even planning to call, drive Uber in the morning to bring up some income, to stay the business. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything else in person, who do we have online?
Speaker is Yo-Yo Suay.
Mr. Schway, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is Yo-Yo Schway from wonderful 270 Broadway. We obviously support the renewal of the parklet program. We are located on Broadway and not the sort of frontage street of El Camino, so we do not share the same concerns that Mr. Bruce expressed. However, of course, we would empathize with any business owner that feels that parking is being constrained. I believe that parklets are obviously needing to be distributed in a sort of geographically sparse way to ensure that they don't create direct impacts to customer parking, but it seems like the current concentration, as well as associated demand for parklets, is somewhat in equilibrium, is stable, in other words, and we shouldn't be worrying about oversaturation of parklets or a real competition on, for example, Broadway between parking in front of businesses and parklets. I believe the parklet program has sort of stabilized itself. In regards to fees, we've seen some cities in the peninsula suggest outrageous fees, such as in Palo Alto, where they've suggested fees of $10,000 annually, and we would be disappointed if the city were to create some kind of fee system that had no nexus or connection with the costs of actually administering the parklet program, which I understand to be nominal, if not very, very minimal. So we would want a parklet fee that was not tied into the size of the parklet, but rather a flat fee. We would want to see the parklet fee be, again, something very minimal. We have not seen the amount of business rise back to pre-pandemic levels, specifically to Millbrae. We haven't seen sort of the vibrancy, and I think anyone who visits Millbrae downtown would feel the same way, that they haven't seen the same type of bustling, sort of 30-minute search-for-parking type of crowds that we saw pre-pandemic. So right now is unfortunately still not the type of time to make significant changes or to disturb anybody who has an existing parklet. We still need to be in the mindset of assisting businesses in creating a more cohesive downtown and using the parklets as a transitionary tool to get businesses to come together for the establishment of our eventual Business Improvement District, or BID. So I appreciate your guys' attention to this matter, your ongoing support, and we definitely continue to try our best to provide for the Millbrae community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schway. BJ, I'm sorry, please come forward, Mr. BJ?
Yes.
BJ?
Hi, my name is BJ, I'm the General Manager at Sugan Indian Restaurant, 333 Broadway.
I'm sorry, which restaurant?
It's an Indian restaurant on Broadway, so I just wanted to support the ordinance. I actually just wanted to say I agree with whatever you, you had to say. It mostly aligns with the, the customers are actually loving the outlet, you know, the parklet. Given the weather, you know, it was really popular, as I, you know, we get a lot of support from the regular customers who are residents of Millbrae as well. I know the parking is a little bit of an issue, but I think people have to have an option. option to dine outside, you know, they, they want to bring their pets, they want to enjoy the weather. Despite so many fairs that we have on Broadway, people still like to use our parklet. We, we welcome anybody, you know, who want to use it. So I think I just wanted to say that I fully support this. But that's about it.
Thank you. I have no other written request. Do you have anybody online?
Mayor, we do not have anyone else online.
Thank you. So with that closing public comment, bringing it back to City Council, I would only, I had one question I led, I texted to you earlier today. A resident, a retail outlet on the same 300 block of the El Camino Real Frontage Road sent us a handwritten letter and then talked about parking also for her tenants in the, I think it was her tenants above, it was a handwritten note. And the question was, where do the tenants who live upstairs in the buildings on the frontage road, where do they have parking? Because I don't know the answer.
Mayor, I would need to know, I didn't receive that, unfortunately. I would need to know the specific address of that building, because some of those buildings do have parking off the alley in the back, and, and some do not. I do know there's a couple of buildings that have used their parking facilities for storage. So it just, it's kind of on a, on a property-by-property, case-by-case basis.
It's actually attached as a staff, in the staff report. So if you could look that up, that just was my one question, because I knew some had parking, and maybe some just use it coming and going. And I'm well aware that the 300 block of the frontage road was probably the one most impacted by pre-COVID times, the Taiwo Restaurant and its popularity on that. So I'm wondering, and I'll let the other council members get back to it, but staff, how this might fit with, fit with our long-range parking management plan? Don't answer now, just have, be thinking about it. Can't speak tonight. All right, council comments. Did I see Councilwoman Kaylin? Okay. Councilwoman Papen?
And I thank the speakers for coming, because each and every business is extremely important to us, and Vern's been here a very long time. Get all that, and he's been very clear. I've talked to a lot of people now that are just, you know, I went shopping downtown and I couldn't find any parking. And people give up. So as the mayor noted, the, you know, our downtown parking, we have to do better somehow here. Can you tell me how many parking spaces exist now that 18 have been removed?
Total number of parking spaces in the downtown?
Yeah.
So our count is just, just above 1,000 parking spaces.
Okay. And one of the photos, could you bring up your photos again, the samples here? But you said they couldn't cover the gutters. It looked like at least one of them, the gutters cutter. I can't talk tonight either.
There's something in the air, then.
Yeah, something. I mean, looks like the gutters are covered on all of them.
Yeah, in other words, you would, you'd have to let the stormwater flow underneath the boards, because you do have to have an ADA accessibility. So there is a, they're, they're raised up to be flush with sidewalk level, so that allows the water to go underneath the parklet.
And, you know, I do see some like slight encroachments here on the sidewalks, too. My, my concerns are, as you set forth here, the, the impact on small business, obviously. Criteria, design, maintenance, I mean, I literally saw campaign stickers on one parklet. And subleasing of parklets, not related to the business that put them up, and these things should not be allowed here. If, if we go down this path, which is concerning here for the reason of the local businesses, we have to be able to somehow make the quality of the downtown area better. You're charging a fee, or you're doing something here, there has to be some long-term benefit to our businesses. Not sure how that happens here. I'm not sure I agree with an administrative fee either. I mean, one of these parklets, the city put up. It's the top left. So, I mean, what's the status of that? That was a test parklet before COVID. We built that. I mean, are we getting anything in return for that benefit that was given?
They have a permit for that one. We did, we did issue them a permit. They were actually the very first parklet permit. It's currently used by, I believe, Nine Noodles, is the name of the restaurant, if I'm not mistaken. And we would, when we create new criteria, they would be held applicable to that criteria as well.
Again, we have, I don't know how to do this in such a way that we help preserve the businesses that all exist downtown. So I'm, I'm looking for ideas here, so that Vern can have his business and not be support, you know, working for his employees and so forth. So is there a way to, the parklets are enjoyed, I think, by a lot of people here. I would like to see specific standards, maintenance, all the things you mentioned here. But how do we save our businesses? Anybody got an answer?
Well, I don't know how to save businesses unless they serve great food and have great service, but I think the plan is-
A lot of people locked out of their cars for Vern? What I'm-
No, I've had, so, you, you know, you're asking some questions here that are longer term. And I think with the adoption of the downtown specific plan, the solution is to, and we're going to be bringing a parking, a full-blown parking management plan to the City Council, seeking your approval, so we can go out and, and look at parking meters, looking at development of parking garages, revenue sources to develop parking garages, to add the supply of the parking. I think in terms of the solution for outdoor dining, because we now know that people enjoy that in the city of Millbrae as, as a result of COVID, you heard that from someone for a restaurant, they are very popular. The solution is to widen our sidewalks. And as we widen our sidewalks, we'd have to eliminate angled parking to move to parallel parking. The widened sidewalks then would allow for outdoor dining to eliminate the, the parklets. And so the widened sidewalks would accommodate the outdoor dining. We would lose about 20% of the parking when we would move from angled parking to parallel parking, but we would accommodate that in the proposed parking garages. The great thing about the city of Millbrae is we have land assets. The Magnolia Lot between Victoria and, and Hillcrest, the, the server, the city owns that. We should really look at adding to our supply of parking. That may be one or two levels below grade and two levels above, knowing that we don't want to impact the residential neighborhood to the, to the west of Magnolia. The parking lot between Broadway and the El Camino Frontage, between the large gray office building and the 7-Eleven, we own that asset. And then where Farmer's Market is, we, we own that parking garage. So I think we have assets that we can utilize and, and add to the supply, but I think it's, it's not going to happen overnight. So one, I think adding to the supply, two, having a funding source through, through paid parking, and three, widening the sidewalks to accommodate the needs for outdoor dining and, and just, just enjoyability of our downtown, our solutions.
The numbers are very, very important. Adding parking, that'd be great, but the, the way you described it, you know, going, we absolutely have to add before we take away anything. I just, I think we have to work with some of the very small business owners here. Try to find some accommodation that somebody needs to go to their businesses here. They can get there without having to circle around and doing all this stuff. And yes, the impact from the other side of El Camino is only going to get worse. I don't know how we accommodate that, given the new state laws here, they're just less and less parking. So again, data is going to be very, very important here. I'm looking for the miracle that helps everybody and makes it a nice place to sit and dine, too. So I, I don't have all the answers here, but the more innovative we can be, I think the better. It's going to be extremely important. And I don't think, I think we should cap whatever we're doing here. I don't, I really, this is hard. I don't want the whole downtown to become parklets and no place to park. So those are just my thoughts at this point.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question before my comments. Is there a, a current parking target goal that we have? Said that we have about 1,000 or so current spots, we might be taking some away before we get more. What is our ultimate goal?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Vice Mayor, and that is to be vetted through the parking study-
Okay.
-that we'll be bringing, because I think it is important to look at the demand for, you know, the types of businesses, restaurants, retail, to accommodate some of the parking demand for new residential that may not have parking, and, and just seeing exactly what that, what that demand is.
Right. And then also- Yeah, I was just going to say, some of the same businesses that would like the parklets are some of the same business that would be impacted by limited parking as well. So it's catch 22. And, and as the councilwoman just stated, that it's, how do we find that sweet spot to be able to address the concern and, and meet the need of serving all of our businesses and making sure it doesn't negatively impact other businesses? Is there a way that you think in developing your plan that you can take into account what you're hearing tonight, that would address possibly having a certain number within a geographical area, as well as some type of lottery cap that was just stated? That also takes into account the other concerns that were brought up, business impact, negative and positive, addressing, obviously, the, the parking management study? What else? Of, of also addressing the, the cost of implementation of the program? And how do we balance the loss of a parking spot? That if we do go to metering, there's going to be a cost associated with every single spot that we have in the city. And if we're going to be permitting certain spots out for parklets, what is that cost? What's the minimal cost that we can charge a business and making sure that we're incentivizing it, but not pricing it out to the point where we're trying to make a profit on it as well? So it, it impacts our, our business as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're going to do, we're going to do that study and bring it back to you. You know, one of, one of the nice things in, as a planner, we, we steal a lot of other people's ideas.
Right.
And one of the nice things about having a hearing like this, and also with the EVAC Committee, is that they give us ideas through their comments, and sometimes they're unexpected. You know, they just throw something out there. And, you know, one of the ideas that somebody threw out at the EVAC Committee was that these parklets should be just in front of the business that they serve. They shouldn't go on to the ones next door. You know, that's something that you would just, oh, well, yeah, that's a, of course. You know, things like that. So I'm actually here tonight to steal other people's ideas, and, including yours. And you may, we don't all have the same ideas. And what we're going to do is Jennifer and my staff and everyone, we're going to compile all this stuff and come up with the best that we can do for our situation in Millbrae, because the wonderful thing about parklets is that cities all over California, all over the country have been using them. So we, we, we have experience now on how that works. It's funny, because like the first parklet was only in San Francisco, something like maybe 20 years ago. It wasn't even a thing until recently. It's a very recent phenomenon in planning. And the other nice thing about parklets is they're temporary. If we have an annual permit, we can, it's just, that's it. It doesn't have to be forever. So it's, it's one of the nice things about planning. It's one of the few things where you can, you know, you, you can, dare I say, make a mistake, because it's just something in temporary in the public right of way. But we're not going to make a mistake. We have a lot of experience on how parklets work. We're going to look at our parking situation. I think we're going to be able to put together a good program. I think it's really interesting that the parklets have sorted themselves out with this equilibrium, as someone noted tonight. I think that's very interesting. And it's interesting, too, because we've had businesses take them down, you know, recently. So, so yeah, I think, I think it's an interesting system, and we're going to get the best practice that we can find and bring it back to you.
Yeah, and I think that's also important to listen to, why they take them down after spending, as the gentleman just said, after spending $10,000 to $12,000 to build, why was it taken down? And, and what can we learn from that? And making sure that they have a voice. Of course, there's going to be a very loud voice from businesses saying, hey, we want this. And there's going to be encouragement, because this is new throughout the, you know, this new phenomenon of parklets. But making sure that those that are in that minority voice have a voice in the room when you're making this decision to present something to the council.
Absolutely. And we're going to bring this back to EVAC. We'll talk to Planning Commission about it. We'll bring it back to you. So we'll thoroughly vet this.
Thank you.
I would just add, the other challenge that we have is enforcement, right? So some of the ideas that, you know, we've kicked around are specific business permits, like we have our residential permit parking program. So, for example, Millbrae Lock, is there a way that we can say, okay, these parking spaces are for these addresses, or have a, a permit parking program for businesses? And I think it's doable. It's just, how do we enforce it, right? And, and how, how does that? So these are the things that we are, are thinking about. And, and as Andy said, we'll, we'll bring those back to the City, City Council for sure. So.
I had a question and then a, a comment. Do we think this has leveled out, or do we anticipate more requests coming? Do we have a sense of that?
You know, I, we haven't really, from, to my knowledge, I don't think planning has really received any requests for new parklets. We've obviously heard interest of keeping them longer, but I haven't heard any new requests. It's been actually the other way around, where people have just taken them down.
In the spirit of brainstorming, just throwing something out there? I know storing parklets could probably be an issue, and, but not going into vetting, one maybe idea that could be a happy medium is making them seasonal, so not having it year-round, but in the, I won't say summer, because summer isn't necessarily our, our best weather months, but assessing what our best weather months are for outdoor dining.
That's a good idea. Some, some cities have done the seasonal route, where you might have like a, you get it so many months out of the year, you take it down, you put it away. We could do that with the permit system. We could have a special lower rate permit where businesses only put it up for maybe the nice months of the year. I wouldn't, you're right, I wouldn't say June is the nicest month. It's the coldest, what was that line from Mark Twain? The coldest winter he ever felt was the summer in San Francisco. Well, that's kind of how it is in June. But, you know, September, October are our warmest months, so maybe that's when people would have a temporary parklet. So we could create that through this program. So that would allow businesses maybe free up some parking, for example, for the rest of the year when they're not being used. But yeah, they certainly can be temporary. It's a great idea.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, couple of, couple of questions then. I would like to get the response to the, the person who did the handwritten note in the staff report. And maybe it means, yes, if some of those mixed-use, historical, beautiful mixed-use buildings have turned their garages in the back into storage, we might need to remind them that they need their tenants parking in there, if we have the legal mechanism to do that. I'm looking at this map, and clearly, this photo is before the parklets went in, and I'm looking at, and I'm going to mispronounce it, the Indian Restaurant, Sugan? Sugan? I was there recently, and there were two parklets there. And the new restaurant that had gone out, did it, and then I heard it was going to keep its permit, or did it get rid of its parklet?
They removed, they removed their parklet.
They removed it, because I will tell you, when we have beets and brews, especially in the hot months, everybody is hiding in the shade right there. So, and I, I do like Indian food, so, all the best. But I'm wondering, some of the other cities, when I read articles about this, or I was telling somebody, I was down in Menlo Park a few months ago, and their parklets all are low. Now, their weather is better, and they don't have our wind. So looking at Fiddler's Green, which has clearly been built for the weather and to be all year-round, but it is probably in the, the one block that has the worst parking situation. And I did, I was in Millbrae Lock, and I did talk to Mr. Bruce about what might be some alternatives, and we talked about sidewalks. I hope that you will share very specifically that information, so that- I hope that you will share very specifically that information so that staff can account for that. But I, and I think this is before I saw Fiddler Green adding the wrought iron, which at least is a step up. But how do we, can you look at some ideas that might be lower but can still accommodate our terrible? Because when I've been to Fiddler's Green, it's really popular daytime, nighttime on that. But that, to me, that's the block with the worst parking situation. So if we can come up with alternatives specifically for that block or we pilot that block, we try to figure out what to do there, given its unique situations. We talk about Millbrae having our unique housing situations. Well, different blocks have that. When I look at Wonderful, it looks like Wonderful has painted it. I haven't, I haven't noticed, I noticed the unpainted from the outside, but if it's recently been painted, great. There's usually more parking up there than there is in other blocks. And I guess we really do need to roll this out completely or in a new way when the parking plans are in there so that we can have that. But I look at that 16 Mile House has done a lot of work. I don't necessarily see it, but I'm not down there on a Friday, Saturday night in good weather. So maybe it's a little bit, I have seen it really used during events and during the middle of the day in there. And I think theirs is completely within their storefront on that one. So if you could look at some of those, if you could look for beautification, I think I told you this one bakery in Menlo Park, they've, it's very permanent. They've got a cement walkway. I have an elder where tripping and falling has now become life and death. And it's completely seamless and it goes up. And then they've got flower beds and it's no taller than three feet off the ground. So all the other shops, you can see their windows, you can see their signage. And if we could at least look at that, I would like to see that. How we handle the heating and the cooling, come back with us for that. And again, I do think the 300 block of El Camino Real is unique. I think the next block, I think with a kitchen on it, can also be unique, but it has a parking lot right on the other side of the kitchen. So it has an outlet for people to find parking. That block is, if, if we can come up with some plans on that. And, and I think most of our downtown merchants for their employees who aren't using a fleet, a, a business vehicle have a parking plan. We might need to go back and look at that. I know I was amazed once, there was one store down there that had six or eight employees and they all parked in the Magnolia lot and they all paid for the permit, but that was six to eight positions that the public couldn't use. So if we could come up with that lovely shuttle bus, you know, to get employees to work, maybe the employees can park farther away and there's more room. But it, it's kind of both of those together.
I mean, like a lot of the, we, we are trying to fit, you know, 10 pounds of flour in a, in a three-pound bag. And we all know that. And the, and the only long-term solution is to move forward with our parking management plan, add to the supply of parking, figure out what our, our total demand is. Come back to the, the city council. I do believe parking meters, you know, all of the businesses we have spoke with, think it's now time to install meters. We're one of the only cities, us in San Bruno, I think. And there is a lot of studies that there's additional parking, parking turnover that makes that space more available. But parking supply, redesigning our, 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 our public area within the downtown is definitely the solution, in, in my opinion. And then, Mayor, on, on the particular letter, that's 341 El Camino, we'll go out and we'll take a look at that and see exactly what the situation is.
It seems like it's all within that 300 block, although I'm sure the 400, 200 block has some of the similar issues on that. You know, in terms of that, I was on Fourth Avenue in San Mateo last week. I had to pick up a medical supply, so I was, I needed five minutes and it cost me $1.50 for five minutes, which kind of bugs me. I'm very Scottish when it comes to that. So, but I do, and I was talking to the merchant, I said, yeah, I could bring Millbrae in a million or two a year. And then I hear from people at Birmingham saying, we love coming to Millbrae, we shop at Trader Joe's, you don't have parking meters. Keep in mind that it, it does, not having them is attraction, but it is hurting us. So a buck fifty for a five-minute run-in was a little steep on that. Plus, to see the machines in the light was really tough. And a lot of us are getting older and our vision is getting there. So again, I, I look forward to it. Do you have enough information from us? Was there any other comments, Councilwoman Pappan?
Who owns the alleys, I see?
So that is, I, I would have to look, council member, but there's definitely a public right-of-way. I just don't know. I, I believe the property owners own midpoint of the alley and then there's an easement, access easement, public access easement that's granted.
So I don't, since we're trying to get anything we can here, so I don't know if they've ever been utilized for quick in and out pickup. I know Lili, the bus used to come in the back with the stewardesses to pick up and take out the food back to the hotels. So, I mean, just if there's a more creative way we can utilize that thoroughfare, that would be great. And then also, too, so we have the EVAC group. I just wonder if we can be more collaborative. So certain businesses have certain hours. So if whatever we put in as far as parking goes here, maybe we can add some flexibility certain times of day. And we have heard some, from some of the restaurants that, you know, don't be too tight during the lunchtime because then people are not gonna come back because they had their lunch and then they walk out to a parking ticket. So I, I know we have to finesse some of this here, but really look at timing, look at our alleys there, look at property owners. Maybe they are not utilizing the areas around there. And also, I really wanna look at here, too, we have various sizes of cars. So if we can squeeze in a little mini-spot somewhere, and then we have those big, huge ones that no matter how they park, they're always gonna be hanging out on Broadway because our curbs, too, are uneven. So all kinds of little things here. They have seen cities where they have mini parking spots, with those little teeny-weeny cars or motorcycle. I know we have some motorcycle parking here. I'm just wondering if we can utilize that in a duplicative way here for those mini-cars. So again, we're just trying to think outside the box here and try to accommodate everybody. That would be something.
Excellent. Thank you. If there's no further comments, I wish you good luck for the merchants, especially on that block. Make sure that you keep working with the city and be specific. Oh. We already closed public comment, so maybe it's up for the next one. So thank you.
Mayor, one other business point, just, just for the record this evening, is, is one of the businesses on Broadway asked about a nexus. It, it is not just that, and it is something we'll be working with our legal counsel because there is a market rate for that public property that we need to be careful, that we don't have a gift of public funds and that we get fair value for that space because we can't just give public property away to a, a private entity. So I just wanna go on the record, there will be, maybe somebody mentioned Palo Alto at $10,000 a year. To me, that's not unreasonable, given the market and given the space and, and given, you know, what is public property. So I just, I think that's a business point that we need to keep in mind, that this won't be for free.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. All right, moving on to, that's closing of existing business, moving to new business.
There's an action item. I'm sorry, that item. So, yeah, is there an action that the city council would like, you know, based on the recommendation to continue with the parklet program in an interim basis until planning can come back with an ordinance to recommend in the city council? And we can put a, a time on that, Andy. With, with all the due diligence and things, probably six months, I would, I would.
I think, I think six months is fair. I would say, because September, October are the warmest months of the year, maybe you would want it to not end when people are using the parklets, but that would be about six months, I think, probably.
And, and I say six, because that'll take us, you know, going out, working with all of the business owners, you know, the retail shops, the hairdressers, the optometrists, the restaurants, working with EVAC, you know, looking at our parking inventory, parking management plan as we start to introduce things in the interim. And I just think that would give us, if, if we could bring it back sooner, we will. I just, I wanna be realistic in the time.
Six months is August. Are you saying?
I was just thinking, the council's usually dark in, in August. So maybe by September, October, October would be.
October.
And I'll say, as part of this, we'll, we'll be, breakfast may, probably will necessitate a study session or two with the city council as we evolve the program. So it's not like we're not gonna see you introduce it tonight and come back in September. There will be a, a process there.
Okay. Hold up one second. Because you're new, the Imbimbos who own Millbrae Square came to the city council a number of years ago and asked for the removal of, of at least, I'm gonna say, at least six, if not seven, parking places for their little permanent parklets. The difference with them is they also own the big parking lot in front, you know, between Safeway and Office Depot and the parking place in back. And maybe there's some other way we can utilize and keep the parklets because they're popular and, but keep the merchants nearby whole. So if we could really work on that. Sorry, Councilwoman.
I think we have to understand, six months is a long time for a business that's suffering right now. So we might have to have some interim relief. Is that six months of in business time for somebody like Vern here, sorry, there, Vern? But, you know, be aware of that, you know, for the overall, I absolutely agree, but please, let's work with some of the small businesses right now so that they are not, six months could wipe somebody out if it's not working. So thank you.
So the motion then is to direct staff to study the issue and bring it back to us within six months or the end of October? Where am I hearing? Where is council?
Mayor.
Let me come back to the.
I think it's a, would be the action to continue for an interim period of time, the parklet program. And direct staff to bring back an ordinance regulating parklets.
Back with an ordinance. And in the meantime, especially work with the El Camino Frontage Row businesses who have fewer parking options.
Yeah, and we'll look at, like I had mentioned, perhaps, commercial permit parking, if, if we're able to identify parking spaces for certain address numbers, that type of thing, we, we will, we'll move forward. We just need to do a little bit more, I'm not familiar with the legalities on that. And then, of course, the enforcement.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, perhaps, sorry to interrupt, Andy, but perhaps, maybe those, those restaurants that want to pay for the rent of the parking spaces also are paying for the enforcement, you know, they, you know, we'll, we'll look at that fiscal impact if we need additional parking enforcement in the area.
And so, in general, I'm okay with that direction. Just one little suggestions on helping certain small businesses on the frontage row is to consider painting certain parking space green zone where it'd be 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever that might be that fits, so that those, at least those parking spaces turn over quicker. So therefore, at least, we can help alleviate some of those parking demand here.
I don't see the other two, but you've got at least three of us for more green zones.
You know, I, I think that's a very good, good idea. Yep.
Okay.
But with that, the deadline for bringing back?
Yeah, it could, it doesn't have to be a firm and hard date. We could just shoot for late summer, early fall. My concern is staff time, staff resources, because, you know, we, we have a lot of, and we, of course, we still have to have the council priority soon, but our goal is to do this in-house.
Yeah, but, but my, my point, Andy, is that this is a priority. We're not gonna let it lag and, and we will, we will move resources to make it.
Absolutely. This is a priority. It's an in-house project. It's something that we have to get done. I mean, the COVID-19 is over, the, today's, today's the last day, so we just don't have a choice. We have to work on it now. So, but we do not want to delay this either.
So the terminology for the motion is continue for the interim and bring back an ordinance as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
With a hyper-focus on the local small businesses that have, are being impacted negatively.
That's right.
Can we, City Clerk, do you have that? You'll keep us honest?
I believe so.
Okay, very good. If there's a motion in a second.
I did not.
I'll, I'll make a move.
Thank you, Mr. Feng. Second by Councilwoman Pappan. Any further discussion?
So Mayor, may I, just, just to make sure that we're all clear? So the motion is to continue with the parklet program for an interim period of time while we're making the priority now to try to provide some relief to those businesses that are impacted as we develop a, a permanent ordinance that we'll bring back to the city council in September of this year, no later than September of this year.
And at least by the photographs, I should have driven down there, I ran out of time today, a request that they all, they all look pretty good right now, but let's make sure they continue looking good.
Yeah, and if I may, on that point, so that one parklet that you had mentioned that they painted, that was a code enforcement action. So we are on top of that, making sure that these do not become blighted, they do not become in disrepair. So that's another element of our service that, that we're providing.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we have a motion. We have a motion. Second, call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The council, continue the current downtown parklet program in the interim and provide relief to local businesses that are impacted and direct staff to return with an ordinance by September 2023, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Congratulations. Onto new business, item 10, appointment to the Board of the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, known as BASCA, and the Bay Area Regional Water System Financing Authority. This is an action item. City Manager, do you have a presentation? Staff report pretty much explained it.
Yeah, Mayor, for time, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would only say that what we did was approve my position to fill Dan Quigg's remainder of his term. This is for the term beginning in July and running for four years.
Correct.
Any comments? Seeing any, no comments? Any, opening it up to the public? Any questions? Acting City Clerk, do you see anything there? I have no handouts for it.
We don't have any speaker slips?
I have no speaker slips.
We do not have any, anyone with their hand raised.
Very good. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council. Any discussion? Did I, I need a motion, a motion in a second.
So move.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Goodman.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feng. No further discussion. Mr. Gonzalez, could you please call the vote?
Sorry, Mayor, is, is to, to continue for you to, to serve?
It's a new position, actually. It's technically the way BASCA wrote it in the letter which I gave to the city clerk late, that they just need it as for the next term for that. And that's the way the, the motion is written.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The motion passed by five to zero for item number 10.
Thank you. We do have a closed-door session following council comments, but if I could ask, anybody wanna go first? No one ever wants to go first. Councilwoman Cahalan, I know you have been busy. Please go ahead.
Okay. I, I made a comment, just one item on number eight in the, the National League of Cities Conference. I know was, there was a mention about tangible outcomes and we didn't put that in the motion, but maybe we could at some point have a presentation to the council about learnings and outcomes from both the sessions and the meetings that you're planning, if, if folks, if the public and the council would like that. Yes, things have been busy. Last week, I had my first commute.org meeting. They did a presentation on the new 101 Express lanes that are coming, as well as a lot of work around equity access to those lanes and programs for accessibility to folks at lower income levels. They have a program they're rolling out where folks can get a card at a value of $100.
Clipper card.
A clipper card or a fast track with $100 on it. They can get one or the other to have access to either public transportation or those lanes. So maybe that's something I can work with our public information officer around, helping get the word out to our Millbrae residents on that. They're also working around creating certifications for TDMs, for They're also working around creating certifications for TDMs, for developers, so that when developers submit their proposals, they can come in with a TDM certification already in place. So those are some of the work that they're doing, but it was a great first meeting. I'm learning a lot, and I think, over time, they'll continue to bring more, more to bring back to Millbury and for us to bring to that group. We had the Airport Land Use Commission meeting last week. Millbury's housing element was on the agenda. They had some recommendations for us that they actually had already brought to our planning department and is already being incorporated into that. So we're in a good spot with our housing element in regards to the airport land use. Something that I've had conversations with the city manager about is the SFO zoning compatibility guides. And during our discussion of housing element on there, another council member from another city brought up how outdated those are and how it didn't seem right that we were putting our housing, they were putting our housing element up against those zoning guides. They said that it's not the Airport Land Use Commission that updates that, but C-CAG. And so I know councilmember Pappin, you're a C-CAG representative, so maybe that's something we can bring up and encourage. It was a council member from Foster City that was concerned about that, so maybe we can collaborate. I attended a meeting with the Labor Council. They had a roundtable with new council members, and it was really great to meet the Labor Council representatives, hear what some of their priorities are and share what some of our priorities are. I took a tour of Samaritan House's safe harbor shelter. I'm trying to learn more about the social service agencies as a member of the homelessness subcommittee, and so looking forward to bringing more of that back. But it was really wonderful to learn about the services that are happening there and the work that they're doing in the community. And the manager of that shelter is a Millbury resident. And then this past Saturday, we had the MEF Gala, and that was a great success. They met their fundraising calls. They had an 80s theme, so it was pretty fun to see everyone in their 80s gear. And I think for, for one song, we had the ladies of the council dancing together. So it was a fun night. So thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Councilwoman Pappin?
Okay, thank you. Yes, the MEF, the Millbury Education Foundation Gala was great, and I know a lot of the parents worked really hard on that, so it was really nice. Very big contributors helped out, I think it was over 150,000 they were able to raise there. So thank you to everyone who participated, and some of those outfits were quite amazing. I myself burned all the clothes from the 80s, but then I was not going to get one of those perms again. Okay, the, to follow up with Councilmember Cahalan here, the airport land use plan needs to be redone, and it's not necessarily C-CAG, it's the subcommittee. And we would like to try to, one of my goals is to get childcare put in there, because right now the airport will not allow us to develop in those areas to have childcare. So hopefully we can get that, it's way overdue to be updated. And the express lanes, I am also on that committee, and as colleague mentioned here, for nonprofits, communities in needs, we are trying to actually get more of those passes out there for the Clipper Card and the Transponders. And our program, as established through C-CAG and the TA here, is really one of the best, and everybody's looking at the program, the equity programs we have set up here in San Mateo County. So it's great if anybody, we should actually get it on the city website, but we really need to reach out to our nonprofits and schools as well. The, let's see, yeah, the groundbreaking tomorrow, please note, hopefully, that is going to be an all-electric building future, so probably one of the very first life sciences buildings, which is going to be all-electric. And went to the state of Silicon Valley, and if anything was stark reality here is the huge income gap in our region. So Silicon Valley includes San Mateo County and Santa Clara County, literally 85 billionaires, a whole bunch of millionaires, and everybody falling below that. It is real, that's why, you know, we're trying to emphasize here, the affordability of units that come in here is so vital and important. People are being displaced every day, so it is something we really need to work on. I attended the self-help for the elderly lunch at the senior advisory committee. They're updating their goals, emphasizing their newsletter outreach, and they're going to try to do better on multilingual outreach here. They are also looking for sponsors for the coffees at their senior lunch, because it's a little more expensive if the seniors have coffee and we have to have people, more people to serve it. So we're going to try that out, so the seniors can get their coffee there. And I'm very excited, I'm going to have a neighborhood meeting on Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the rec center. I know that's going to be, some of the parents are working on their campaign, and, but we hope we get, we're going to have some bilingual services and hopefully test some methods of really listening and hearing instantaneously from our residents. So that's going to be very exciting, and I want to, oh, and please, I hope that we can close tonight's meeting in memory of Elaine Corcamelis, who was a longtime Millbury resident. Her son had positive electric here, Nick, her husband, Kosa, is still with us, daughter-in-law, Deborah, the family really was Millbury all the way for a very, very long time, and she just passed away. Funeral was today, so please, our thoughts and well wishes are with the family. Hopefully, we can close in her memory.
Thank you, councilwoman. We're a positive electric family, too, so, very sad.
Councilwoman Fung?
Thank you. Peninsula Clean Energy, which has approved another one and a half million dollars of funding to help improve home energy efficiencies to all San Mateo County residents, to those who qualify, through a program called Home Upgrade Program administered by Richard Heath and Associates. They help homeowners upgrade to heat pump, their heat pump water heaters to the heat pump water heaters, to get rid of the gas water heaters. And some also go as far as to help upgrading some electrical panels as well. So PCE spent also over $400,000 on community outreach last year through probably 13, 14 NPOs, nonprofit organizations, to help reach out to communities on various programs offered and paid for by the Peninsula Clean Energy. So between e-bikes and home upgrade programs such as this, just to name a few, PCE dedicate millions of dollars of funding to help residents making their lives more cost and time efficient, so, and also at the same time reducing carbon footprint. So please go to the website and apply for those programs that would be helpful to you. And I would also encourage other NPOs to get in touch with PCE. I could be helpful with that as well, to help get the word out for many other PCE programs that are available throughout the whole county. We want to make sure we reach as many people as we can here. Hot board, we just selected a new chair. Congratulations to Mayor Michael Brownright, new chair. We look forward to working with you here. And also, as already mentioned, we participated in the fundraiser. Thank you for those involved in help up our children through funding many different enrichment programs that they enjoy every day. We raised over $150,000 for our kids in Millbury, and it is the generosity of our community members such as this that makes Millbury great. And many, some say it takes a village to raise our children, and it's nice to see that MDF has helped inspire the whole city, help educate all of them. So thankful for their effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice mayor.
Yes, I had one committee meeting, and because we did not meet quorum, there was only unofficial conversations had. I did regretfully miss the MEF fundraiser. I had an opportunity to spend some time with family, and I'm happy to hear that they met their fundraising goal. I guess lastly, on the conversation of housing and parking, that if we had a choice, for me, my choice would be using our energies focused on doing more low-income housing, really trying to address kind of discouraging, you know, ICE vehicles within our city. So I think there is a priority, and we have a choice between two parking garages. I would hope one, one of those spaces would be focused on low-income housing. It's city property.
Thank you, Vice mayor. In terms of BASCA, city manager, the two projects that they're working on, a lot of it is waiting for whether the governor rescinds or the water levels rescind having to go into tier two, but they're still moving ahead with tier two. You had told me Millbury is still going ahead with our tier-two water conservation efforts. But they are hoping to roll out a subscription service for leak, finding leaks, and I think those are on the big water mains, and then every water agency, if they want to, can subscribe to this additional service. And I don't have it in front of me, but I think as much as 9% of the water in the system can be lost to leaks. That's not talking about leaks at people's homes, that's leaks within the water agency's piping system. I may be a little high on that number, but it's a pretty scary number on that.
You said 9% mayor?
I think, but I'd have to go back.
That's accurate.
So 9%, okay. It just seems like, for the public, that means that all of the 24 agencies around the Bay Area, some are better than others, it's depending on the life of your pipes, but the lesson to be learned here is that it's a very complicated system, and just like an old house, or just like when we go to the doctors, we have to do ongoing maintenance. And this new subscription service, every agency can apply for, and we can begin to reduce our leakage, even if we're out of the drought, or we're only into a moderate drought, we still want to be working on conservation. That will still be the message on there. Millbury BPAC met and talked about two main items. One of them is the concern of electric bikes, especially electric bikes on trail systems. On that, I will tell you that I am hopeful that that is going to be on the C-CAG BPAC's agenda for Thursday, March 23rd. It's an issue basically popping up everywhere, because those bicycles are supposed to not go any faster than 20 miles an hour, but even 25 miles an hour on the spur trail can frighten everyone on that, so that's a concern. The main part of the BPAC meeting was actually on traffic calming, and we have some new staff there, the engineer, the new engineer, I didn't write his name down, he took very good notes and hopefully is bringing it back to Public Works and back to Director Batista. And I think they included everything from the three crashes on Palm Avenue to near Cappuccino, to up the hill on that. So it just showed that a lot of the BPAC meeting is actually going for traffic calming, and there's a fit. It fits with the two of them on that. The SFO Roundtable Legislative Committee met, and we have the preliminary set of six goals that we're advocating for specifically for SFO and largely for the close-in communities on that. The mayor's coordinating council met last Thursday. I am hoping that we will get more time that, well, what happened is, we've asked Millbury Cert, city manager, you and I talked about that, to help looking at our seniors and people with mobility issues that might need help during an evacuation, and had a partner with the senior commission on that, and see if we can start moving forward on that. That's also something we have been talking about for six years at the emergency services level. COVID got in the way, and we know that we can't have the data, and we rely on either the care program from PG&E or certain other services. But I am hopeful in the next fiscal year, if it gets, that we, we are partner with emergency services to roll out some of the practicing of an evacuation system. It may be entirely just, you know, filling out a piece of paper, but we have never participated with Zone Haven, but knowing who our impacted neighbor, who our impacted people are that need help getting out of the home and getting out in the event of a disaster is something I think Millbury Cert will work with the senior commission on. We, Adopt a Spot was going to work on March 4th, but we don't want to conflict with the councilwoman's meeting, so the Adopt a Spot cleanup day for Bayside Manor, the sign right at the corner of Hillcrest and Hemlock will be postponed. And we're going to try to do more outreach to, or I should say MCAC, to the people who live on Hemlock, in the hope that we can increase participation on that. But it has been a tiny bit rainy. CalCities has their legislative update, I think it's March 15th, it might be the 16th. Both those days are extremely popular, and that's to discuss all of the 4,600 bills introduced in Sacramento on that. And then I have a meeting a following week later on the policy committee that I now serve on with CalCities. And with that, the Sister Cities hosted the Japanese Sister Cities of the Peninsula at the Recreation Center. Great meeting. We had, I think, six or seven other Sister Cities talking about programming. And finally, I attended the senior luncheon at the rec center. Oh, and our staffer, Roland Tiyanko, has announced that the city is doing the soundproofing at the rec center, and it's coming up shortly. And to please bear with the city as we do that soundproofing, the Valentine's lunch had over 80 people. It was amazing, it was noisy as heck. So I can't wait to see the soundproofing, and congratulations on that happening. With that, we are going to move to closed session, but we will be closing in memory of Ms. Corme.
Elaine Corcamelis.
Corcamelis on that. Thank you. And, go ahead, city clerk, do I close it, but do I leave it open for closed session?
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Ms. Casman.
Hi, hello, everyone on the screen. I'm so sorry, I can't be with you. But I will be taking the council into closed session to discuss a matter of existing litigation. And the litigation is entitled De Lima, or City of Millbury. The case number is shown on your agenda. There, we, we probably, given the time of night, should adjourn the meeting to the closed session, and then I will report out first thing when we next meet.
Very good.
If any action is taken.
Thank you, city attorney.
Okay, that is allowed under the Brown Act, and I guess, I doubt the public is going to wait, want to wait up and hear the action, if any, tonight, so I will report it first thing at our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Casman. So we are closing the meeting at 9:45, and city council will be retiring to closed session.